Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a wonderful seventh grade student from Harry Hurst Middle School. Her name is Ally Schubert, and she is going to be leading us in the prayer this evening. Let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Ally. She has been in Talented Theater for four years. She's a Hurst cheerleader and has been one for two years. Outside of school, she dances and volunteers with the younger dance classes as a mentor demonstrator. We are so thrilled to have you this evening. Could we all please stand?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening. As we begin the 2021-2022 school year, we ask that you guard our community leaders as they continue to protect and serve the people of St. Charles Parish. We pray that our board members come together with open minds and grateful hearts. May every decision made tonight be a reflection of your holy will. Protect our faculty, staff, and students as they navigate through this challenging year. Cover us with your Holy Spirit so that we may stay healthy in mind, body, and spirit. Grant our school board members, administration, and community leaders the grace needed to make this year successful. We pray for an end to this pandemic and all those greatly affected by this virus. Let us also pray that everyone has a Hurstastic year. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ally. You are wonderful, and we hope you have a fantastic Hurstastic year. We appreciate you. We may now have a seat. Thank you. So precious. We appreciate you. We are going to begin our meeting at this time. We will begin with the pledge given by Mr. John Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, we're ready to move on with our meeting. Thank you. All right. First up on the agenda this afternoon is our roll call. Let the record show that all board members are present this evening, along with our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and our board secretary, Ms. Shelley Bavino. We welcome you all. We're called to order. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move forward now with our resolution of in memory of Mr. Jack J. Bryant. And I would ask Mr. J. Robashow, would you be so kind as to read that, please?
It would be my honor. Resolution in memory of J. Bryant. Mr. Jack J. Bryant served as an educator for thirty-two and a half years, twelve of those years an administrator in St. Charles Parish Public School System. And be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Mr. Jack J. Bryant its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow. And be it further resolved that a page in the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Bryant's family, who is present tonight. And I move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robashow and a second by Mr. Nockham. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Do a verbal, please. Verbal? Need a verbal? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. I'm not sure what his. Okay. All right. Moving on to item three point zero one, the board and superintendent's recognition. Dr. Ortling and I will go in front of the area to take pictures. We have some wonderful Hawnville High School students to recognize this evening.
Hawnville High School students received superior ratings at the International Thespian Society's National Festival. Frank Clavel. Logan Jones. And Adam Viedros.
Wow. Congratulations to our phenomenal Hawnville High School Thespian students who performed so magnificently at the International Thespian Society's National Festival. We are so proud of you all.
Thank you.
Their teacher, Mr. Lucas Harms, is here this evening, and he shared with me there were others that we were going to be celebrating, but they're off at college. We want to thank Mr. Harms for joining us. So we'll now take, we want to thank you all for being here, but we are now going to take a two-minute recess in case you would like to take the opportunity to leave at this time, or if you want to remain for the remain for the remainder of our meeting, you're welcome to do so. Y'all have a good evening, and thank you for coming, guys. Congratulations. We are back in session, and item four point zero one is are the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one committee meetings and the July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular board meeting.
I'll say.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Nockham. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Oh, gotcha. Item four point zero one passes unanimously. Item four point zero two, flood insurance renewal. The school board has purchased flood insurance on district-owned buildings since two thousand seven as required by FEMA in order to qualify for reimbursement in the event of a declared disaster. As part of the National Flood Insurance Program, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is covered by Wright National Flood Insurance Company, provided by Egan Insurance Agency. The district has ninety-six flood insurance policies, with seventy-two of them renewing in September. The upcoming renewal premiums and policy schedule were reviewed by the Director of Risk Management and Benefits. The remaining policies will be renewed as they become due. The district's property insurance policy also provides ten million dollars in excess flood and storm surge coverage. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move approval of the renewal of flood insurance from Wright National Flood Insurance Company, provided by Egan Insurance Agency, at a cost of two hundred and seventy thousand, ninety dollars.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robashow and a second by Mr. Nockham. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero two passes unanimously. Item four point zero three, Legal Services Resolution. This resolution is necessary in order to comply with the requirements of Louisiana Revised Statute forty-seven, colon, two sixty-three, authorizing the school board to hire and maintain a diverse list of available attorneys when legal matters arise. Administration desires to include the list of approved attorneys in the list of approved attorneys, the following firms to assist with law, school law, general liability, and workers' compensation. In order to assist with school law and workers' compensation matters, the district needs to have additional firms available with extensive litigation experience and to offer expert advice.
Madam President, I move that we.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robashow and a second by Mr. Nockham. Do we have any discussion?
That's Mr. Sufferin.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It sounded like it came right over there. Thank you.
I'm throwing my voice.
On Mr. Sufferin, Ms. Bavino. Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Nockham. Mokehi. Mokehi. Mm-hmm. All right. Any further discussion or comment? Please cast your vote. Item four point zero three passes unanimously. Item four point zero four, Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. A statement of total disclosure must be provided to the auditors each time the St. Charles Parish School Board's financial reports are audited. This statement is provided by completion of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. As a faithful discharge of the trust placed in the school board by the citizens of St. Charles Parish, a complete disclosure of the district's financial operations is mandated. By completing and approving the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, the board unequivocally demonstrates integrity and openness in its reports and records. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we authorize the superintendent, board president, and chief financial officer to sign the audit documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Savron, please. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero four passes unanimously. Item four point zero five, accounts payable for the month of July, two thousand twenty-one. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of July, two thousand twenty-one, in the total amount of four million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Robashow. Are there any comments or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero five passes unanimously. Item four point zero six, appointment to board, to the board of trustees of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund. Members of the Board of Trustees of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund were initially appointed to staggered three-year, two-year, and one-year terms, respectively. No time limit was set on the number of terms any one appointee could serve. Accordingly, it is necessary for the St. Charles Parish School Board to appoint new members, renew the terms of the current members, or replace members. The St. Charles Parish School Board is the overseeing custodian of this trust fund, and members of the Board of Trustees must be approved by the school board in order to award scholarships in conformity with set criteria and guidelines.
Madam President, I move that we appoint Guanona Champan to the Board of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Nockham. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero six passes unanimously. Item four point zero seven, ratification of change order number two, E.J. Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement, now known as called Eul J. Landry Educational Programs Center. The contract modifications included in change order number two are as follows. Number one, remove and replace deteriorated roof section at a cost of one thousand, two hundred dollars. Number two, remove and replace deteriorated wood decking at a cost of eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Number three, remove and replace deteriorated wood backing behind wall panels at a cost of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And four, raise parquet height to eight inch minimum at a cost of two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents. The total cost for all work changes is fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam, madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of change order number two for the E.J. Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement.
I'll say.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Nockham. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero seven passes unanimously. Item four point zero eight, ratification of change order number one, Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations. The contract modifications included in change order number one are as follows. Number one, delete electrical conduit from main feeder panel at a credit of three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ten cents. Number two, delete data and communication wiring at a credit of nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Number three, delete epoxy flooring in janitor closet, credit of nine hundred and sixty dollars. Number four, add twenty-two whiteboards at a cost of eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Number five, add tile in corridor, in corridor C one hundred and in restroom at a cost of ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And six, add laminate to chair rail in reception area at a cost of five hundred and one dollars and ninety-five cents. The total cost for all changes is a credit of four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and three cents. Three contract days were added to the contract for phase one and zero days for phase two as a result of construction change directives. To further prevent delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of change order number one for the Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations at a credit of four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and three cents.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Correct? Thank you. It's a little hard to hear on that one. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero eight passes unanimously. Item four point zero nine, ratification of partial substantial completion Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, D renovations. The Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations is ready to be accepted as partially substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Wednesday, August the fourth, two thousand twenty-one, with punch list items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. This recommendation was discussed with the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvement Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and aligns with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of partial substantial completion of the Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A, C, and D renovations.
I'll say.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Nockham. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero nine passes unanimously. Item four point one zero, ratification of change order number two, Hawnville High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The contract modifications included in change order number two are as follows. HHS Gym Existing Door Frames Credit for Existing Frames. The credit is seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Number two, credit for omitting K-13 insulation from underside of walking track and replace with dry fall paint at a credit of five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. The total credit for all changes is six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the ratification of change order number two for the Hawnville High School Gym Renovation and Addition in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cent credit.
I'll say.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Are there any concerns or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point zero one passes unanimously. Item four point one one, ratification of partial substantial completion Hawnville High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The Hawnville High School Gym Renovation and Addition is ready to be accepted as partially substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Friday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, with punch list items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. This recommendation was discussed with the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and aligns with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept ratification of partial substantial completion of Hawnville High School Gym Renovation and Addition.
I'll say.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Nockham. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item four point one one passes unanimously. Item four point one two, ratification of change order number two, Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The contract modifications included in change order number two are as follows. Number one, delete two doors at a credit of two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Number two, delete receptacles in room one-ten and one-twelve at a credit of nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Number three, delete F-eight light fixtures at a credit of two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Number four, add fire line backflow preventer and tie-in at a cost of twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Number five, add additional court side seats at a cost of eight hundred and five dollars. And number six, delete fitness room graphics at a credit of one thousand, forty-eight dollars. The total cost for all changes is fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. To prevent further delay of the project, authorization was given to the contractor to proceed with the work after getting approval from the board president, vice president, and capital improvements chairperson. Approval of. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept ratification of change order number two for the Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition at a cost of $15,632.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.12 passes unanimously. Item 4.13, ratification of partial substantial completion Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition is ready to be accepted as partially substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Wednesday, August 11, 2021, with punch list items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. This recommendation was discussed with the Board President, Vice President, and Capital Improvements Chairperson. This item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and aligns with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept ratification of partial substantial completion of the Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.13 passes unanimously. Item 4.14, 2021-22 Pupil Progression Plan. Revised Statute 17:24G requires each local education agency in Louisiana to prepare and submit annual revisions to its pupil progression plan incorporating any changes required by state and local demands. Board approval is required before submitting the document to BESI. This item was presented at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and aligns with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Plan.
I move we approve the 2021-2022 Pupil Progression Plan.
I have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn.
Second.
A second by Mr. Nakham. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.14 passes unanimously. Item 4.15, Revision to Board Procedure 4.13R, Test Security. Upon review of Board Procedure 4.13R, Test Security, revisions were required in order to align with current practices. This agenda item was reviewed with the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Plan.
I move we accept the revisions to Board Procedure 4.13R, Test Security.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.15 passes unanimously. Item 4.16, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve our personnel moves for the month of August as presented to the Board on Monday.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Nakham and a second by Mr. Savwa. Do we have any discussion or comments?
Madam President, I'd like to provide, just a moment to provide special recognition to our Director of Transportation, who's joined us this afternoon, Mr. Corey Bird.
Welcome.
Welcome. He has officially been with us one week, so he's still here, so that's a good sign. Welcome to the team, Mr. Bird. I know you do far more things in the transportation department.
Thank you so much for joining us. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.16 passes unanimously. Item 4.17, St. Charles Parish Public Schools COVID Leave. According to CDC Guidelines, St. Charles Parish is in an area of high community transmission for COVID greater than 10% with a current positivity rate of 21.2%. Since school system employees continue to experience impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Board must determine practices relative to paid leave for employees who are required to isolate due to personal illness from COVID. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we reinstate modified leave options for employees provided by St. Charles Parish Public Schools COVID Leave through December 17, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakham and a second by Mr. Savwa. Do we have any discussion, concerns? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.17 passes unanimously. Item 4.18, Revisions to Board Procedure 4.2R, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Professional Employees. Upon review of Board Procedure 4.20, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Professional Employees, revisions were required in order to align to Louisiana law and current hiring practices. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakham and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion or comments? Hearing none, cast your vote. Item 4.18 passes unanimously. Item 4.19, Retirement of Policy and Procedure 4.11, Administrator and Supervisory Positions. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 4.11, Administrator and Supervisory Positions, it was realized the contents of this policy and procedure was duplicated in Procedure 4.02, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Professional Employees, and Procedure 4.50, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Classified Employees. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we retire Policy and Procedure 4.11, Administrator and Supervisory Positions.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakham and a second by Mr. Savwa. Do we have any discussion or concerns? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.19 passes unanimously. Item 4.20, Revisions to Board Procedure 4.550R, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Classified Employees. Upon review of Board Procedure 4.550R, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Classified Employees, revisions were required in order to align to current hiring practices. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, August 16, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Procedure 4.50R, Recruiting, Selecting, Hiring, and Assigning Classified Employees.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Nakham and a second by Mr. Savwa, correct? Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.20 passes unanimously. Moving on to closing items. Item 5.01, Standing Committee Reports. The Chair will now hear from any committee chairpersons that would like to report at this time.
Madam President, the Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, August 16. There were eight items on our agenda. The first item, Disinfected Program Update, was for committee meeting only. The following seven items were approved at tonight's meeting, and they were: Ratification of Change Order Number Two at the E.J. Landry Alternative Center, the roof replacement project; the ratification of Change Order Number One at Mimosa Elementary Buildings A, C, and D renovations; and the ratification of partial substantial completion at Mimosa Elementary Buildings A, C, and D renovations; ratification of Change Order Number Two at Hornville High Gym Renovation; and also the ratification of substantial completion of the Hornville High School Gym Renovations and Addition; the ratification of Change Order Number Two at Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition; and the ratification of partial substantial completion of the Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I appreciate that.
Madam President, I'm going to take the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting for Mr. Nakham. Monday night, we met and discussed 4.16, 4.17, 4.18, 4.19, and 4.20 with Mrs. Weber, and all those were dispensed with at the board table tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Savwa. I appreciate your report.
Madam President, I have two committee reports to present. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee held a meeting on Monday, August 16. The committee discussed two items that came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those were the flood insurance renewal and the legal services resolution. The committee also received a monthly legal update in executive session. And lastly, Director of Risk Management and Benefits Darrenisha Gray provided an update relative to our contract with CCMSI, the district's third-party administrator for workers' compensation and liability claims. Also, the Finance and Audit Committee held a meeting on Monday, August 16. The committee discussed two items that came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those were the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for Fiscal Year 2021 and accounts payable for the month of July 2021. The committee also received an update relative to our 2022 bond tax election from the Superintendent, CFO Ronald White, and Bond Counsel Jason Akers. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. I appreciate your report. I would share then that we also met at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee on Monday, August 16. We had two items that were brought before the board this evening. That was the 2021-22 Pupil Progression Plan and the Revision to Board Procedure 4.13R, Test Security. Those were presented by Ms. Erin Grange and Ms. Colleen Charles. We appreciate their help there, and those items were approved earlier this evening. Those two ladies also gave us an extensive review of test scores from the previous year. And that was for committee meeting only. We thank you very much for that extensive report. And that concludes my report. Moving on now to item 5.02, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Parents, if you're sending your child to school, please ensure you take their temperature daily before leaving your care. If your child is sick or is experiencing any symptoms of sickness, please keep him or her home. This will help keep a safe environment for all students and minimize additional impacts on our schools. Although we have taken and continue to take very proactive safety and health measures to mitigate potential spread and exposure of COVID-19 virus, we recognize the virus is still very active in our community, state, and country. As expected and planned for, we have students and employees reporting confirmed positive COVID-19 cases. This will continue as we operate schools during this pandemic. We communicate regularly with the Louisiana Department of Health, follow their guidance, and implement protocols established as outlined in our family reopening guide. Please note, the safety of our employees and students is paramount, and any decision relative to schools and/or classroom closures will be made in collaboration with public health officials. In the unfortunate event, we must close a school or classroom temporarily or for an extended period of time. We will notify you via phone call, email, and text. Each school is prepared to provide continued learning for students in the event of a closure through the use of district-provided technology devices. After many months of preparation and anticipation, we successfully and safely reopen schools this month for our students and families, both virtually and in person. Our heroic staff have and continue to operate under immense pressure and challenges to keep our students safe and our schools open. While there are noticeable changes, our core business of teaching and learning triumphantly returned across our school and virtual environments. The Public Information Department was able to capture some very special moments from the first days of school. I'd ask that we'd like to take a quick look at the video that was produced by our wonderful producer, Mr. Mason Duffin.
Welcome back, one and all, to our Stronger Start 21-22. A brilliant inventor, Henry Ford, once said, "If you think you can, or you think you can't, you're right. Your thoughts are powerful. So this year, believe you can and shoot for the moon. At the very least, you'll land among the stars. Have a spectacular year, everyone." Have a spectacular year, everyone.
I'd like to welcome everyone back to the new 2021-22 school year. You should not allow this pandemic to ruin the school year for us. This is going to be a test of our character, and I'm sure that every student will do their best to make sure that they're successful in their school year. So I welcome everyone to the new school year, and have a great day.
I'm excited about this year because I think it's going to be a record year as far as achievement and accomplishments in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The main thing that I'm excited about is, at the high schools, we're going to have African-American history program this year for the first time in St. Charles Parish, and I'm really looking forward to that. I would like to say thank you to all of the students and all of the employees of St. Charles Parish for allowing us to educate your students and your children.
Welcome back, everyone, to the 2021-22 school year. We're looking forward to everyone having a great year. We welcome our employees and our students to having a stronger start. Again, welcome back, everyone, and let's have a fantastic school year. These are unprecedented times for the third straight year this school year will be affected by this terrible pandemic. However, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools, and I am confident that our students, teachers, and employees will rise to the challenges to meet them head-on as they have the previous two years. I am also confident that our Stronger Start 2021 will allow us to focus on our core business of teaching and learning while also keeping our students and employees safe and healthy. Every student matters. Every moment counts. Welcome back.
We're fortunate to be living during some of the most challenging and interesting times in the history of public education. Let me assure you that despite the challenges and setbacks, the Board of Education is committed to ensure that each student reaches his fullest potential. We ask that each of you will contribute your share to make sure that this is a successful school year.
Welcome to a new school year. As we start the 2021-22 school year, we remain focused on providing high-quality educational opportunities for all students. We know that aside from a child's home, no other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than when they're at school, our schools. The in-person school environment provides engaging learning experiences, supports the development of social and emotional skills, creates an emotionally safe environment for learning, addresses nutritional needs, and provides important physical activity. At the same time, we continue to operate a high-quality virtual learning environment that also addresses the diverse needs of our students while engaging them in rigorous learning experiences. While this school year may look a little different because of challenges presented to us by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we are committed to maximizing in-person learning and keeping all students and employees healthy and safe. Thank you for your continued patience, understanding, and support. We'll continue to overcome challenges presented with compassion and resolute determination because every student matters and every moment counts. It's going to be a great year. Welcome back!
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Public Information Department and specifically our videographer, producer, Mr. Mason Dolphin, for once again putting together a fantastic video. Thank you, sir. And finally, I'd like to give a special thank you to the Board for your leadership and support throughout the last few months as we have had to quickly change plans based on the current spread of COVID-19 in our community and schools. Thanks for you, to you, and, let me stop, and thanks to our dedicated, hard-working employees who continue to work valiantly in the face of adversity to make sure students are educated and provided high-quality educational opportunities that prepare them for their future. And to our families, we appreciate your continued grace, adaptability, patience, and understanding as we continue to implement safety practices and protocols needed to safely operate and keep schools open during this pandemic. I know it isn't and has not been easy, but I am so proud of the way our students, our employees, parents, and community continue to work together for the betterment of our students, to educate, and... Excuse me? For the betterment of our school system and the almost 10,000 students we have the responsibility to educate and families to support throughout our current operations. We know everything has not gone according to plan, and we continue to navigate daily obstacles, but we promise to endure and turn those challenges into opportunities together for our students. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling.
Move adjourned? Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nakham. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.